Thank you, everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
What a turnout, and I think I know why. What a heavy heart today that Audrey Tillis will be leaving the county commissioner's office. And I would just like to say before we get into our dedication of Audrey is how hard she has worked. She has blazed many trails in her life. She's set the bar very, very high. Audrey held one of the highest positions in county government as an African-American female. She should be very, very, very proud of that. Secondly, I'm going to have her when we call her up. She's going to introduce her beautiful family, but I want to recognize her mother, who she dearly loves and talks about you and worries about you, right, Moni? And it's amazing. And we're going to hate to lose Audrey. I just want you to know that. It's, uh, there's no words to say it, but we'll all get to that point where we get into our dedication. So let me open the meeting. It's the 25th meeting of the year. Today is Thursday, June 26th at 10:01 a.m., and the meeting is called Order. And we will begin with public comments. And after public comments, if we can please, keep them as brief as possible. We have amateur radio month. They are here today, and then we have to do the dedication for Audrey. And there's going to be some livation upstairs after the meeting in the rotunda for Audrey. So we'll get to all that.
And they could speak up.
And they can speak up there, absolutely. So with that being said, we will get into public comments. Your name and address for the record, and please try to keep it to two minutes if you can.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning, Dave.
First of all, let me say to Audrey, if they have the word "public servant", and you look in the dictionary, they should have your picture next to it. Because there are no better public servants that have served the taxpayers of Mahoney County other than you. On May 29th, 2025, we got a directive from the Secretary of State Frank LaRose. I want to point out one thing. He said, "We are mandated to follow Directive 2025-05." One of the things he's remanding us of is adequate fire suppression equipment must be available and regularly inspected and functioned properly. Then he says, "We are obligated, as a Board of Elections, to follow Directive 2025-05." Sandra Barker, the Vice Chair of the Board of Elections, and myself just took an oath to follow these. And let me tell you what we're not doing. One, to prevent damage and maintain integrity of the equipment, each Boards of Elections shall store its voting equipment in properly secured, clean, and climate-controlled area. Two, physical security of voting equipment storage areas must be maintained at all times. Access to the equipment must be limited to the least number of board personnel's possible. Three, if the Board is not equipped with monitored security systems, the rooms used to store the voting equipment, tabulation, and voter registration service networkers must have, must have, a monitored security system that will detect an alarm, any unauthorized access. Five, all equipment, along with cases, cabinets, and/or shelving units, that house the equipments must be under lock and dual-controlled lock system, such to access to the equipment requires a bipartisan team. Six, the identification of any visitors, vendors, maintenance personnel must be verified before they are granted access to the equipment storage area. Seven, the storage area must be equipped and monitored with alarmed smoke detection systems, proper fire equipment extinguishers or suppression systems. Eight, all voting equipment must be stored properly. Each Board must contact the manufacturer of its voting equipment and request and review voting equipment and system manual for instructions. Nine, most importantly, and I didn't bring the pictures today, the storage area must be clean and free of excess dust, debris, and pets. The Board should routinely inspect and clean the area. Voting equipment must not be stored on the ground or in an area prone to flooding or in any area where liquid or excessive humidity accumulates. I've made copies for all three of you that I'll pass out now. And I just wanted to remind you that these are our obligations.
Like.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to ask the commissioners, that I heard a rumor that you were trying to keep the Board of Elections where it's currently at. It is inadequate for our purposes, completely inadequate.
Thank you, Dave. Next.
Can I sneak up?
Sure. Oh, Commissioner Bittsler. Good to see you, Dave. A former Commissioner Bittsler.
That's why I'm so slim and trim and, you know, suntanned. Anyway, you know, I wanted to, I know we're going to talk about Audrey upstairs after the rotunda, but I'm going to the funeral home right after I leave here, and I have to screw that quick. But, you know, Anthony started off saying that Audrey was a trailblazer, and that she was. David Beatrice said that she was an amazing public servant, and that she is. You know, and, but the most important thing that Audrey was and is to this county and to all of us is she's God-servant. And she's been given that from her mother, from her family, from her pastors and friends and the people she works with. You know, she is probably one of the most amazing people that I've ever had the pleasure to work with. She is, she brought to this county, you know, credibility, stability, transparency, trust, honesty. Everything she did, she followed the one rule, and that was the rule of God. And she's done everything that you could ever ask of an individual to do. She's weathered a lot of unnecessary storms, and she's, she has been a blessing to Mahoney County, to her family, and to everyone who's had the pleasure of interacting with her in their life, you know. So I could stand here and talk forever about Audrey. I'll tell one quick story. The day I got elected is 2012, and I met and sat and talked to Audrey, you know, we started talking. I said, "We're going to have to stop out, have lunch, have a drink, and then, you know, I'll buy you a glass of wine or whatever you drink." And she said, "Oh, I don't drink any alcoholic beverages." And I said, "Never?" And she said, "Never." And I said, "You never had a glass of wine or anything?" "Never, nothing." And I said, "Audrey, if you can last four years with me," and I didn't drive, I didn't drive you to drink, "then you truly are a saint." And so she lasted 12 years. And, and I didn't drive her to drink, and I think she truly is a saint. So God bless Audrey. Audrey, I love you. I'll always love you. I respect you, and I have the utmost admiration for you as a person, first and foremost, and everything else just comes along with the package.
Thank you, Dave.
God bless you.
Good luck. Thank you, David. Next. Carrie.
Karen Sorko, 1270 Grand Street, Louisville, Ohio. There's a, if you don't like what's going on in this country today, there's a rally downtown from 5:00 to 7:00 in front of the courthouse, front of this courthouse. And I'd like to know, why aren't the leaders today? I looked at the, um, how much money that's in the rainy day fund. It's $3.5 billion that's in the rainy day fund. I'd like to know why any of the leaders in Mahoney County is not screaming at the government down in Columbus wanting our share of the money. It's unbelievable, and it, I can't believe Trump didn't have no problem blasting Iran with a bomb, but he ignores Putin and his cronies with Ukraine. It doesn't make sense. Well, of course it does. Trump wants to be a dictator like Putin.
Thank you. Carrie, Pastor Simon.
Morning, commissioners. Wasn't planning on speaking today because this is about Audrey today. She is, has been a fabulous, fantastic individual and a blessing and an asset to this community and to the Commissioner's Office. We are so proud of. I didn't prepare anything. I wasn't going to speak today, but I, you know, respectfully wanted just to speak to Mr. Beatrice's comment and his presentation because truly Secretary of State has made some mandates, and I hope that those, all those mandates are met. We're just saying, we're not saying that, um, that the Board of Elections has to stay in Oak Hill Building. If it's not adequate, there are spaces here in the city of Youngstown where the Board of Elections can be housed. And so that's why, that's our case today. Our case is not the fact that the building is adequate. Our case is leave the thing in Youngstown, access for the citizens of Youngstown to exercise their right. That is our plea, and that has been our plea, that is our concern, is that we make sure that the city of Youngstown have access for voting. Leave it here. And the people said, "Leave it here."
Thank you, Pastor. Next. Nobody?
I guess I'll speak.
Oh, let me take this. Old Steve Austin.
Ladies and gentlemen, nice to see everybody here.
Name for the record.
This fine woman over here.
Name and address for the record.
Sheriff Fury Green, Mahoney County Sheriff, 7813 Huntington Circle. Everybody's here for Audrey, and I just have to say, on the way over here, my chief deputy says to me, he looks at me, and he goes, "Oh, my God." He goes, "I'm going to miss this woman. She was like a, she's like a security blanket." And I looked at him, and I said, "No shit." When you run for office, it's very difficult and very, it's taxing. And then you get elected, and you're scared because you don't know. I don't know counting. I don't know numbers. I know police work. I could tell you what I learned along the way, but not a lot of numbers. And we always had Audrey, and she covered us, and there was no, and I'm sorry, I know there's clergy here. I can't help myself. It's like Tourette's. There's no bullshit about her. Everything was, was just fact, and she's such a sweet person. And you just never got the runaround with her. We just always had her. We had trouble with the sales tax. We had Audrey. She could clarify. I can't tell this room, you guys have no idea how many times she has come over to our office and sat down with us and completely crystal-cleared everything for us and moved forward. And you knew what you had in front of you with this woman. She was just absolutely awesome. We wanted to do initiatives to either generate funds or to doing a new initiative, we had Audrey. We wanted to regionalize our radio room, which is just so insanely complicated. We had Audrey. I wanted to take on housing federal inmates. How is this going to work? But we had Audrey. This, and, and I'm telling you, whenever you go, and I hope it's 100 years from now, you will be at the right hand of God. I mean.
Amen.
Thank you, Sharon. Pierce.
I bought you dinner, too.
Congratulations on your retirement, Audrey. To the county commissioners, Minister Ted Brown, 143, Carroll Street, North Side, Ohio, 44502. Some of you may know me as the sister to the pastor of New Baptist Church, the Reverend Kenneth Simon. I'm trying to speak fast, but you never give a preacher the opportunity to speak. As concerned citizens, community leaders, and defenders of democracy, we stand firmly opposed to any effort to relocate the Mahoney County Board of Elections from the county seat of Youngstown, Ohio. Youngstown is just not a city. It is the heart of Mahoney County, home to a population rich in cultural diversity, resilience, and history. To remove the Board of Elections from its rightful place within the county seat is not only unjust, it is undemocratic. We reject the suggestion that the low voter turnout in the city justifies this proposed move. This assertion is both misleading and harmful. The entire county reported a voter turnout of less than 10% in the most recent election, signaling out Youngstown, particularly its majorly black, economically marginalized population, nor systemic tologists that impact civil, civic participation and scapegoats the very communities most in need of representation and access. Make no mistake, relocating the Board of Elections away from Youngstown, disproportionately affects people of color, the elderly, and low-income residents. In a county where public transportation is limited or non-existent in many areas outside of the city, removing the Elections Office from a central accessible location creates unnecessary barriers to voter registration, early voting, and access to election resources. This is textbook voter suppression when government actions make it harder, not easier, for people to participate in elections, particularly those in historically disenfranchised communities. The county seat exists for a reason, to serve as the legal and administrative center of the county. Removing the Board of Elections from Youngstown undermines the legitimacy and authority of the county seat and sends a troubling message to its citizens that their voices and votes matter less. We stand in solidarity with those who fought, marched, and died for the right to vote, especially in Black and Brown communities across this nation. We call on all Mahoney County residents to see this proposed move for what it is, an act that will widen the gap between the governed and those in power, and a dangerous step backward for democracy. We demand the Mahoney County Board of Elections remain in the city of Youngstown, the county seat. Public hearings, hell, with full transparency and community input, before any decision is made, investment be made in civic education, voter outreach, and transportation solutions that expand, not restrict, access to the ballot.
Thank you, Deacon Brown.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Do you want to do this here?
Yeah.
No?
We're going to do amateur radio. Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody. And again, remember, there's a little bit of, uh, there's going to be a dedication upstairs on a rotunda following the meeting for Audrey in the courthouse. With us today, we have amateur radio days, June 28th and June 29th. And here, I believe the gentlemen's are here. Is Scott Walton here? Scott, come on up. Board member Andrew Andy Brinko, come on up. Would you like you to say a few words on behalf of amateur radio, if you don't mind?
Amateur radio is something that is going to be available in disaster times if something happens. But this coming weekend is our playtime, and we get to test our equipment. What it is, is we are at Metro Park's farm in the big barn, if any of you'd like to stop out and see us. But we operate for 24 hours from 2:00 o'clock on Saturday until 2:00 on Sunday in the afternoon. And this is to test our equipment, to see how things work. But it also is kind of a playtime and contest to see how many contacts you can make with how many different radios and setups that you have. Andy, is there anything else you'd like to say?
Yeah, we, uh, we do this once a year. It's done nationwide and in Canada as well. So the U.S. and Canada participates in this. All amateur radio operators, we take, we call it Field Day because we take the radios out into the field, and we operate mainly away from commercial power. We operate on emergency power, on temporary antennas and temporary equipment installations to, as Scott said, test our equipment for emergency preparedness. The radio is not just a hobby. It is a service granted by the Federal Communications Commission. We are mandated to provide public service, and we need to be prepared to do that at a moment's notice. And with training throughout the year, with local training, we get, we're able to do that. But this is a nationwide bit of training that we have where coast to coast, Hudson Bay to the Mexican border, we get together and we try to make as many contacts with people around the country, most of whom are operating the same way on emergency power.
It's amazing. Thank you. Okay, well, we have a proclamation to give.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck to you guys. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Okay. County commissioners would like to present this on behalf of amateur radio days for all the hard work that you do. If the internet or satellite goes down, everybody's going to come see you guys. You're our last resort. So congratulations. Thank you again for coming down.
Thank you.
That's a, that's another point. We don't rely on infrastructure. We have instantaneous infrastructure that's packed away in bags and boxes, and it appears when it's needed.
Thank you, Sergeant. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Rossley photos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rossi, would you come up?
Sorry, Joe. I thought you said.
To just say, Carol, I agree with everything that has been said about Audrey. You have been a blessing to the older adults in Mahoney County. We really appreciate all that you've done. Earlier this week with the hot weather that we've had, we found out that the air conditioning system at International Towers had some, uh, some problems. Partially, partially, some of the, some of the HVA system was not working. So I wanted to just let you know what we did, and actually how we paid for getting it done was through our levy dollars that we've set aside for emergencies. At International Towers, we installed two large floor-standing, eight, uh, air conditioning units on the, in the community room, so everybody in the building will have access to air, you know, cool air. We also had our staff go door-to-door. Anyone over the age of 60 that needed help, we're helping. So we're also receiving calls from folks in the community. We're going out to help those folks, too. So I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for your support of and putting a levy on the ballot previously, and that those dollars are continually going to good work. So I appreciate everything. Audrey, you are a blessing to this community, and your family is so lucky because of you. Thank you.
Thanks for helping out for some of the individuals. It, I mean, it's just killer heat.
Old guy with COPD couldn't breathe.
Couldn't breathe, I believe. Heart problems. I mean, it's bad. Okay, well, I'm going to recognize Audrey here again. I have something I would like to read.
Oh, okay.
Okay. It's so beautiful. I was asked to read this, and I think it should on your behalf. Board of Mahoney County Commissioners would like to extend its sincere recognition and gratitude to Audrey C. Tillis for her dedicated service as Mahoney County Administrator. Throughout her tenure, Ms. Tillis has demonstrated unwavering commitment to the efficient and effective operation of Mahoney County Government. Her leadership, strategic vision, and deep understanding, and that is true because I can verify that, when Audrey wants to get into the weeds, she knows the numbers, of understanding of county affairs have been instrumental in guiding numerous initiatives in ensuring the delivery of essential services to our residents. Audrey's professionalism, collaborative spirit, and tireless efforts have significantly contributed to the betterment of our community. We commend her for her exceptional work and profound impact on Mahoney County. At this time, I would like to turn it over to our county administrator, Audrey Tillis, for some words.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Take a deep breath and don't cry.
Good luck with that.
You know how I am. Someone cries eyeball. You know, last night, I, uh, this, last night, this morning, we talked to the Lord, and I said, "What do I say?" You know, um, "All of you are my friends." I meant, I have made so many friends, and, and, and it's been real. We've been able to be vulnerable, been able to talk, fuss, scream, whatever, but still come down to a resolution that was best for Mahoney County and for the citizens of Mahoney County. The thing that I feel or think, I don't do anything unless I have a piece of God with it. It's just what I am. It is who I am. And as long as I have a peace, then I move forward. When I don't, it's time to stop, and that's where I am now. I always told everybody, when I turned 65, I was retiring. I stayed one more year. That's where my pieces at this today, and where he takes me from there, he only knows that. I'm always open because I always follow his leading.
I do.
But what I say is, listen to one another. Everybody has a chance to make a mistake. Everybody needs to be picked up sometimes. Allow people to be vulnerable. Allow people to show themselves and listen, listen. I could not have done everything I've done without every elected official working together. I could not. The Board could not. I could not have done it without a Board behind me that supported me. And I don't think it's an "I" either. I think it's a "we." We brought this county out of a really bad situation and a really bad place. It took being transparent, showing where we were, showing where we are. We are stable today. And I have comfort in that, that when I leave here, this county is in a good position. We're still vulnerable to changes at the State House. We can't control that. It impacts us, and we then have to react again. But the reaction requires people to work together, not apart. And yes, the city of Youngstown is the heart of Mahoney County. So are the townships and the villages and all of it. You guys all need to work together. That is an important part of survival for Mahoney County. Ability to listen to one another and take everybody's input. Over the years, that's what we've done, is taken everybody's input and tried to do what is right. That's how we have the senior levy. That's how we have the justice fund and the justice tax. Yes, it was more revenue, but it was used for a purpose, and it's very clear. We said it was going to be used for those purposes, and it's being used for those purposes. Nobody's dipping into it and doing something other than what was said. The road tax, you can see the improvement in the roads. When we were doing the road tax, Carol said, "We got to make sure we include something for the, the Youngstown, for the cities, not just Youngstown, but the cities." That's where we got the bridge part from because the engineer controls the bridges. So those things are all thinking of the county as a whole. How can they work? But they work as a statute of state. They are arm of the state. They are dictated by a hierarchy code, and they can only do certain things as that statute tells them. And a lot of times, people want them to do things that is not in that statute. But when they say they can't, they can't. When they can, they do. I've seen this Board reach out to many agencies, businesses, and everything else through ARPA, through COVID, and everything that we've done. I don't want to get into naming names or anything like that, but I will name one person today. And she'll kill me for it. It's because we've had a long time of a partnership, and that's Stacy. It is important that the fiscal side of county government works together. It doesn't work if it doesn't. And I've been where they're trying to have those divisions, but they have to work, and we work together.
I really thought you were going to say me.
Kathy, you're my other side.
That's the justice side, right?
I said I was going to name all the names because I'd get in trouble today.
Everybody's supposed to wait and hear your name.
He, he knows Stacy, Stacy, Stacy knows that. Kathy knows that. We have worked hand in hand and those things have made and helped to bring that. Our elected officials behind us have pushed us and, and supported us and lifted us up to make sure that the county is in a good sound place. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very, very proud of that. Thank you. And you can thank yourselves as citizens. You can thank yourselves as elected officials and everything else because if it doesn't work and you guys are all in fights with each other, guess what? It isn't going to work. I don't care who's in this city. It'll be a mess. It has to be able to work together. You got to appreciate people, appreciate the differences, appreciate who they are. Not everybody's going to come at you with smiles and nicest. Some have rough characters, but it's their character. It's their personality. It's okay. Know what, know what that character is. I'm saying learn who they are before you judge them. Learn them. Behind that, you're going to find something much better than what the outside looks like. And that's how we learn people and that's how we move forward as a government and a county. And this county's got a lot of good places to go. Board authority is doing great things, you know, our agency.
Thanks to you.
Our county, our agencies are doing good. They've been supported. And we've been able to be lifted up. So I appreciate every director, every elected official, every citizen. Our citizens that come and keep us informed, that let us know and, and keep us accountable. Do it, do it. It's okay. We, you're, you're, that's your right to come and say what you have to say, but understand you're being heard. They can't talk all the time about everything that they're doing and all of those things because certain things are executive session stuff. It doesn't mean that people aren't being heard. And they will form and they will weigh everything as a county as a whole. They know what's important. They do. And trust them. You voted for them, so trust them. I didn't know it was going all the way that way. I told you, I just follow the Lord leading. That's all I'm going to do. You know, I can get on the pulpit too. And I'll be in good. My mom, my sister are here. My husband couldn't be here today, but my mom is my heart. And, and one of the good reasons of why. You know, that me and my sisters, we take good care of our mom, my mom, my mom stays with me and she needs me, you know? And that comes first to me. That comes first to me. Well, first is God, in my mom. In my mom. So that is what it is. So thank you for allowing me to be the county administrator, county budget director, county executive director, whatever you have decided to me to be. And believe me, I did any and everything and anything that needed to be done. And that was what was done. So, and I, and Nancy's not here. Nancy has been a jewel to the county. Her knowledge and her support throughout the years and her knowledge of these records and everything else is unmatched. And she knows that. And so I appreciate her also. I'm not going to go down that road. Try not to go down that road. But I appreciate everybody that has worked with me, everybody that has been part of my staff and everything else, all the courts. You judges are just great. And you, you really, seriously. I have Judge Baxman here.
Yeah.
She's here. Yeah, she's here. You guys are great, you know, because the courts have a lot of authority, but they have worked with us. When we were in deficits and shortages and everything else, they worked with us. You know, they, they took into what they could. They did what they did. They cut when they could cut and they worked with us. And I don't think that, I think our first year I'm here, I got quarters. I haven't got any since then on budgets. People have been, we've been able to do it. So thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you for allowing me to have this position and to work on behalf of the county and Mahoning County Commissioners. And I always say, really, they're my bosses, but my real bosses is the citizens of Mahoning County. Evidently they are the ones that, you know, when I'm trying to guide them and lead them, I'm thinking about them. And what would I want for my mom and for others? And I think that way, and that's how I work.
You're good.
I'm good.
Really good.
Thank you so much.
Oh, that was nice. Would you like to say anything?
You believe me now I'm retiring?
She's going to miss the exchanges in the parking lot. That's what she's going to miss.
Every, every morning, my mom, she, we would exchange between me and my sister in the morning. My sister has a senior center boat of this and my mom goes there during the day. My mom lives with me, you know? She has a good support. Takes good care of her. Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
Very blessed. No question.
Bodie, you have any?
She's a preacher. Watch it.
We love our sister. The same professionalism she has here in the county, she has in our family. She is the youngest, but she is the oldest and she is the boss of all of us. I worked for Sheriff Green for eight years and he knows, I'm, I'm, I'll work, but when I get ready to say something, I get upset. I'm going to share with Sheriff. I'm going to tell him, my sister, she'll keep it and she'll take it to God and she'll be all right, you know? But she's been such a strong support and she, even if I decide to laugh or joke about something, she'll be the yay yay nay nay. Like she don't want to hear no unnecessary. And Sheriff always says she's next to God. She always said that. And our family respects her just the same. And thank you all for allowing her to serve the county. She brags on the Commissioners, past and present, all the time and Colleen, Nancy, everyone, Major Kepi, everyone that's here. She's always complimented all of you. I've never heard her say nothing negative. She never shared nothing with our family about personal things. Whatever happens in here, sometime I'd be wanting to look because I look at her face. When she's quiet, something's going on. I said, Pumpkin, what's going on? She would never discuss anything with us. And so I know then I said, she's a person that you can trust and always respect. Thank you, Pumpkin, for being who you are.
We don't know what the hell.
We're not done yet.
Now it's our turn.
You guys need to hear. So the discounting moves forward.
Is it over there or over here?
I don't know. Where are we going?
We'll go over here.
Over here?
Anthony's leaving the dance.
Someone told me I was still the boss tomorrow. What should I do?
Oh my God. God bless you.
You have to come in on your last day.
Carol?
You know what, Audrey? With our greatest appreciation, we want to congratulate you on your retirement. We thank from the board of Mahoning County Commissioners. I keep trying, you know?
We all have.
I've got to say this, but that ages me, but I'm okay with that because God's given me life. In the 54 years. In the 54 years I've worked in government, I've been through many people, many elected officials, many appointed officials, many administrators. But in my heart, and I know from Mahoning County, I have never worked with anyone with the integrity, honesty, the respect, the love of God and the loyalty. Maybe not in that order it should be, but when you were with Audrey, you knew you were with not only someone equal to me. I never thought I was her boss because at times she thought she was mine. Let's tell you all that she was right. And if there's anyone in this community that doesn't hold that respect and loyalty that you have for us and for me and for Anthony and now Gino, but with Dave, I mean, I've never seen it. And I'm not talking about elected officials, but I just talk about those people that I know that when you reach out on a call, you know that call is going to be between you and that person and a resolution to that will handle the next day. And with God's power, I get nuts. And that's not a, something none, all of you don't know that, but I do have a point with me that I can be up here. But Audrey, you always knew in the 13 years I've worked with you and the prior to that, you working with me. She worked at the auditors and portage. And you were brought to me by a friend of both of ours to come here, come back to Mahoning County. I must tell Mahoning County residents, she has never left the heart of the people out of any decision she's ever made. She's never done that. Of anybody, whether you're elected or appointed or whatever, you have been that rock. And down the road, I have expectations for her, but I don't know that that's going to work, but I do. And she's good. I must tell you, she is true to everything she's always done in Mahoning County. And she took us out, and Anthony can attest to that. She took us out from nothing to have a double rate on rating. I mean, she took us out of that with sanitary and everything and our budget and, and a surplus. We never had that. And you could attest to that as well. We have it now because she had a vision for Mahoning County because why? We are a team and this team are going to follow you and follow that lead as being a team. We're not always going to agree. We're not always going to be pleasant to each other. When the day's over, we have the team. And that's what's important. No matter what party you are, you belong to Mahoning County residents. So she's done that. And so, you know, I'm going to shut up now. She is, I don't preach at church. But, and thank you for coming, please mom and Audrey. Thank you.
You know?
Well, my, my history with Audrey is a lot shorter than Carol's. It's, what'd you say, like 1910 or something? It's been a while. It's been a while, but anyhow.
1969 and I'm 73. So we all know that.
I can hit you now. You can't say anything. When I first came in, in the office and I think one of the first days I walked in Audrey's office and I saw her desk and I'm like, oh my God, there's stacks of everything. The phones ring and the emails are coming. I said, this lady runs the whole county. Everybody, everybody was dependent on Audrey. It, there was the phone call and, and I, and I, we had the discussion. I says, Audrey, when you leave, that phone is not going to ring. And I was worried because of all the stuff that you provided to, to help, to all the, all the agencies, all the different directors. I think, I think we're going to be okay. We're going to figure it out. But that's going to be a piece that's missing. And, and I won't say that I wasn't, I wasn't concerned. But I know that we, we have a great staff around us and you, our budget seems to be in good shape. You've done that. You put people in places where they should be to make us, to make us frankly, be able to carry on when you're gone. But I do appreciate, we spent a few hours together talking about everything. And you were there listening and helped me learn. And it's a lot to learn. Just so you don't come to the meetings and heckle me. That's all I don't want you to do. Don't change your number.
If you do anything that I don't like, I will be in a meeting with you guys.
Well, Audrey, I'm the flower bearer today. Hey, I want to say this to, you know, I've been around some time myself. And I worked 11 years on Capitol Hill, United States Congress under Jim Traficant. And I worked with many elected officials, US senators and high level staffers from various agencies in the government, including Nassau, Department of Defense and the CIA when my boss was on those committees. And I want to say this. Audrey, they could not compare to you. She could go down there and eat them alive. This was back a few years ago, but I've got to say, you hold your head up so high what you've done for this county. You've helped me figure things out that I had no idea how we would get to the end. And you gave us that path, that roadmap to success. So I want to tell you, I'm going to miss you. And I know you told me I can call you. And you're going to come back and visit us. And I'd like to present this to you on behalf of the Commissioners as well for you.
Alrighty. Oh, she moved these down here.
Wish we could just go to Audrey's party and skip the meeting.
Well, you got to prove this stuff.
I know. There you go.
I like that. I could do a blanket.
All right. We're going to move into the business portion of our meeting. And Carol, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion for the approval in the previous minutes of board meeting number 24, Wednesday, June 18th, 2025, and approval of bills for payment.
Second. Rule call.
Director Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes.
And we have advertisement for bids, number one, which is an add-on. And it is engineers. Rick, do you want to? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I didn't mean to do that.
Here, don't we? Sorry, Rick. I was ready to make this big splash. Okay. Thank you. Motion.
Motion for number one advertisement for bids. It is an add-on.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DeFabiyo.
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes. Journal entry?
Motion for the approval of journal entries, number one.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DeFabiyo.
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti.
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani.
Yes. Agreements, letters A through K and A through D, engineers. Rick?
Letter A is in agreement with Central Dental Covenant Administrators for our Dental Plan Administration Services for two years for unit pricing. Letter B is in agreement with Grace Services for guard rose spraying of education control in the estimated amount of $12,900. Letter C is in agreement with PNC Express LLC for cleaning services. That's in the estimated amount of $10,500. And letter D is in agreement with GIS Cutography Publishing Services for printing of county maps in the estimated amount of $8,120. They're all non-genderal.
And ENF, Ms. Morales. Good morning, Audrey.
Good morning, Audrey. My namesake.
Good morning, Audrey, my namesake. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, colleagues. Letter E, Job and Family Services. This is Amendment Number One with Nesco Resources LLC for the Ten of Summer Youth Program in the amount of eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. This is non-general. Letter F, Job and Family Service Agreement with Rolling Hills Spring Water for Water Services in the amount of ten thousand, non-general.
Thank you. And Led, Phil Purrier. I know Phil was here. There he is.
Letter G is in agreement with JDM Real Estate LLC for that house control helps homes work at twenty-four forty-seven Oregon in the amount of nine hundred six hundred dollars. H is in agreement with Foundation for the Future LLC for that house control and healthy homes work at six thirty-one Benwood, you know, fourteen thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars, and, uh, those are non-general. And, uh, letter I, it's denim number one with building neighborhood of the Youngstown, uh, Let's Safe Ohio, Let's Safe renovations.
Thank you. And Lou Vega, I know Lou was here, recycling. There he is.
Commissioners, uh, actually, we have to make a little correction here. Uh, this fifteen thousand dollar agreement with Old Town, not for a, a site lease, but it's actually for site improvement. Uh, we are going into a partial match on repaving the parking lot where the drop-off for site, site is housed. It's about a fifty thousand dollar project, of which line should be paid by Old Town.
Thank you. And sanitary. Jill?
Good morning, Commissioners. Audrey, best of luck to you. Um, this is in agreement with Coop Lightner, uh, for repairs to our crane truck, S forty-six, in the estimated amount of three thousand ninety dollars and ninety-five cents, and this is non-general.
Hey, thank you, Jill. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number two agreements, A through K.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DeFabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Change orders A, B, and C. They're all led. Phil?
Uh, change order number one with Foundations for the Future, uh, for unforeseen items at seven oh seven Roxbury, in the amount of nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Uh, B is change order number one with the Howland Company LLC, the same type of work at, uh, four eighty-seventh Street, in the amount of forty-five dollars. And change order number one, uh, number, letter C with JDM Real Estate for, uh, fifteen thirty Stewart, in the amount of two thousand fifty dollars, non-general.
Thank you, sir. Motion, Carol?
Motion for the approval of number three, change orders A through C.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DeFabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Resolutions?
Motion for the approval of resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DeFabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Under resolutions, we have ledged A through D. We'll begin with, uh, Bill Whitaker, Jen?
Thank you.
Jen, you wanna go first?
Billy, say, go ahead.
So, uh, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to place our renewal levy on the ballot. This funding is obviously very important to the nearly two thousand citizens of Mahoney County that we support, and obviously you and the citizens of Mahoney County support. Um, a, a very big piece of these levy collections goes towards what we call our Medicaid match, which is nearly sixteen million dollars a year. Those matching funds bring over one hundred and four million dollars worth of services, uh, to individuals, uh, in this county. And our system in general employs over one thousand people in this county, so it does quite a financial impact on the county as well, between ourselves and all of our partner agencies like Purple Cat, Running Point, Ray Arc. So, again, I just want to thank you for your continued support, you know, of our program, of supporting citizens with development.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And, um, there was a typo, and I, I didn't catch it. Carol did. It's actually letters A through E. There was two Ds there, so we could correct the record on that. Jen, did you want to say anything for letter A? Yeah, I'll be. All right, letter B then.
Okay. B is a resolution to enter into opioid settlement agreements with the following. Um, the first one is Community Corrections Association, CCA. Um, it's for eighty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. And the second one is for with the Mahoney County Fire Chiefs Association, and that's for two hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you. And jobs and family, Audrey?
Job and Family Services. This resolution is approving the appointment of one family service aide and three case managers for the Department of Jobs and-
Thank you. And letter D, prosecutors?
Resolution in support of the grant applications, uh, with the State of Ohio Attorney General for the Victims of Crime, or FOCA, in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, and the State Victims Assistant, Assistant Act in the amount of hundred, or, I'm sorry, ten thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And letter E, sanitary.
This is a resolution approving for one treatment plan aid for the department.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number two resolutions, A through E.
Second. Rule call. Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, we're going to, uh, adjourn the meeting and ask everybody if you would like to come up to the rotunda for Audrey's party. And with that being said, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Rule call.
Commissioner DeFabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Righetti?
Yeah.
Commissioner Traficani?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Our next meeting, I'm sorry.
Uh, next Thursday, July third, at ten o'clock AM.
July third, right before the fourth. Okay. Thank you.